Around the radius around those areas is critical. Meaning that those areas, ensuring that they're more walkable, more bikeable, that folks feel more comfortable getting there on their two feet or on their bikes. That's what we want to look at especially closely.
Well, Randall, thank you so much for joining us today. So glad to have you on. Do you have a couple of websites you'd like to share with the folks at home?
I do, I do, and thank you again. So first, the mayor's website where you can learn more all about the mayor's activities, press releases, what we're up to across the city. That's mayor.lacity.gov. And then second, the recovery. Folks can look at the movement of debris, how quickly folks are rebuilding, and just are tracking our progress, as well as resources. Resources for those impacted by the fires, both today and looking into the future. And that is recovery.lacity.gov.
Very good. We have those up for folks to see and access. Again, thanks, Randall, for coming in. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Absolutely. And that does it for L.A. Currents. I'm Ann Police. Thank you for joining us. We'll see you next time.
Hello, everyone. I'm Susan Huckle, and here's what's happening in L.A. this week. It's clear the Americans with Disabilities Act led to dramatic improvements in accessibility standards. The Department on Disability marked 35 years of the ADA, and the city pledged even greater accessibility when it hosts the 2028 Olympic and Paralympic Games.
We are here celebrating the 35th anniversary of the signing of the Americans with Disabilities Act. And we're not only celebrating the ADA and how important it is to the city, but how that's going to change how the Olympic and Paralympic Games come together.
In the sixth district, we are so excited that we are going to be hosting a multitude of games at the Sepulveda Basin. So while that isn't a location for the Paralympics, we are looking forward to making sure that every single location, including at the basin, it's accessible for everyone who wants to attend. And that's part of the conversation today as we celebrate the 35th anniversary of the ADA.
Mayor Bass signed a host-city accessibility commitment, and this is extremely important. The mayor has just said to all city departments, to all our partners, that accessibility is a prime, prime requirement of the Games, and that we all need to get behind it. We all need to work together with our partners, our community partners, the IPC, L.A. 28, and that's what we're all about. So I think today is really a sea change for how the city addresses accessibility.
The ADA Act is such an important piece, not only in the city of Los Angeles, but really for our department, the Department of Recreation and Parks. We've been trying very hard to make sure all of our programs are inclusive, and so that every Angeleno, whether they have disabilities or not, can participate in our programs. We have an amazing adaptive program that just addresses those types of needs. And so we're very excited to be here in a supportive role to the Department of Disability.
Our city recognizes that we have persons with disabilities who need to be represented, their needs being met, and that's what our commission does. So it's come a long way, but still, there's a lot of work to do. It's a challenge, but we're gonna do it. Right, George?
Yeah. Learning the whole community and the world know that Los Angeles is a very accessible place, and they're all welcome to come, whether they're disabled or not. Los Angeles is great.
I very much hope that the next three years, we'll be focusing on preparation for those Games in a way that will leave a lasting legacy for generations in the development of our infrastructure, improvements to our public right-of-way, and also changing hearts and minds about the disabled community as well.
For more information about the Department on Disability and the work we're doing with all our city family, you can go to disability.lacity.gov, see our website, learn about our work, learn about our commission, learn about our major projects, and join us as a community partner to make L.A. the most accessible big city in America.
CAL FIRE recently updated the Los Angeles Fire Hazard Maps, and that means new ordinances for homeowners to follow. The Los Angeles Fire Department explained what's new with brush clearance requirements and enforcements.
The brush clearance unit for the Los Angeles City Fire Department is a unit within the Fire Prevention Bureau that looks at all the properties, whether they are developed with houses or whether they're vacant land, that all reside within a fire hazard severity zone. And that zone is required to be inspected for compliance with the state law for brush clearance annually. We facilitate those inspections to make sure that every fire season, the community and the constituents are safe from wildfire. The start of every season in brush clearance begins with an informational mailer. A lot of people get this confused with a notice. It's not a notice, it's not a violation, it's information. None of that information is being enforced. And when I say enforced, we are not citing a violation, we're not giving you a fiscal penalty for noncompliance. It's to get everyone involved. Start changing your thinking on the way brush clearance has been done for the last 60 years. The previous model for brush clearance has always been an assessment of your property within 200 feet of a structure. Everything from maintaining your grass and weeds down to three inches, maintaining 10 feet of roadside clearance, taking an assessment of trees, making sure they're lifted six feet off the ground, making sure you have five feet of vertical clearance over a roof. Why five feet? That's for us. Something happens, we need to get on that roof and have it be unobstructed. If you are unsure what all of those clearance requirements are, you can go onto vms3.org, click on the tab that says clearance requirements. You will see 14 items that are bulleted. Those are all of the clearance requirements that are in effect. That is what you are responsible for in 2025. The CAL FIRE maps have been around since 2014. That was the last time they were updated. That map has now been updated by the state. This new model uses science-based technology to drive a new map. This new map encompasses data that accounts for fire embers, it accounts for fire behavior, previous fire history, topography, all things that we here internally in the L.A. City Fire Department know about, but have not been part of generating the map until now. And it is now identified as a fire hazard severity zone. And that zone is broken up into three different zones. Everything from a moderate to high and very high. The very high zone for the city of Los Angeles has expanded about 20,000 properties. But when you account for the high and the moderate, we're looking at adding an additional 16 million acres of property in the city of Los Angeles. A lot of this is going to take place on the east side of the city. We're also seeing a lot of it in the valley as you push north down to Ventura Boulevard. You'll also see it in Hollywood as you push south down to Sunset. So if you're looking at the state's data right now, and you find yourself in an area that hasn't been inspected before, don't worry, you are okay in 2025. We are not coming out to inspect those properties until 2026. All of the changes that we've talked about, the changes to the fire hazard severity zone map with the moderate high, the very high, the having the conversations about looking at your property in a different way, none of those changes are taking effect until 2026. Everything that you have been doing for your properties in 2024 and previously is the same requirements in 2025.
The Los Angeles Police Department highlighted its Custody Services Division. For anyone who has been arrested, this division is the first line of contact. They process, fingerprint, and ensure arrestees get to their court appearance within 48 hours.
Custody Services Division is a division within Los Angeles Police Department, which provides compassionate, professional care to arrestees that are in LAPD custody awaiting to go to court or waiting to be released. Custody Services Division assists LAPD in the care for its community. Arrestees that come in here, they're part of our community as well.
Being a detention officer entails a bunch of different things. Our main thing is to get arrestees to court in a timely manner. When arrestees are arrested, they have 48 hours, not including holidays and weekends, to get to court. So our main purpose is to get them court safely and on time. During the course of their stay, we're feeding them, we're showering them, we're making sure they can speak to loved ones. We're just going to give people a fair shake either way, whether you're the victim, whether you're the actual arrestee, you're going to get a fair shake when you come through a LAPD detention facility.
We'll start off with processing. Processing, going in, bringing in an arrestee, fingerprinting them, taking their pictures. We're the first line of contact when it comes down to somebody coming into jail because they're going to come in and they're going to be asking a lot of questions. Hey, how long are we going to be in here? And it's all about basically going and telling them the process through. Everybody's different when they come in, and it's all about talking to somebody, being able to like understand them.
I like working with people. So I love the people. I mean, we get such a wide variety of people here, and we get them at some people at their worst moment in their lives, right? So it's an opportunity to really uplift some people.
The compassionate, professional care that we give them really, hopefully, will turn their lives around. A lot of times, people that get arrested, they only get arrested once. They come here and they don't want to come back. A lot of people that are here are here just for mistakes they may have made, and they won't make it again.
Biggest misconception about LAPD is that we don't care about the community. We really care about the community. We care about all citizens. We care about our visitors, we care about immigrants, we care about everyone here, you know? And when I got here, I saw why people can get that conception, because once you're under arrest or you're dealing with an investigation with LAPD, they are very thorough, right? So you could feel maybe uncomfortable sometimes with that, but in the end, just regular human beings, just trying to take care of the citizens of Los Angeles as best we can.
I don't necessarily want this job to be a necessity, but it is. And I come into work every day hoping that there's less and less people that come in that I have to see. Not because I don't want to work, but because that's the compassion I have for people. A lot of times when I'm releasing someone, I tell them, hey, no offense, but I don't want to ever see you again, especially here. You know, maybe out and about, we'll run into each other on other terms, but not here. If anyone's looking for additional information to apply for Custody Service Division, they can go onto our Instagram, and you can, there's a link there that you can follow, as well as LAPD online, follow, or governmentjobs.com, and they'll give you more information.
In the wake of ICE raids across the city, many street vendors are too afraid to sell their wares. At a recent event, Homeboy Industries offered a safe space and hope when they hosted the Puestos in support of street vendors.
Today, we're here in Council District One with Homeboy Industries. Homeboy Industries and their members have organized what's called Hope Alley. So they're bringing out here vendors, street vendors, who have been impacted by the federal immigration raids, to do a food sellout. You have vendors here selling flowers, selling esquita, selling ice cream. And the point is to give vendors and their families a safe place to vend, because the situation right now in our streets is very difficult and very terrifying for a lot of our street vendors. We're seeing people being kidnapped off our street by masked federal agents who are not identified. So this is such a beautiful moment to see Homeboy Industries, the members here stepping up to stand up for their communities.
We wanted to offer for members of the community who are too frightened by the ICE raids and fear of detentions and deportations are staying inside their homes. And so we said, well, we'll have your Puestos, and we'll sell on your behalf. You know, if fear is what keeps them in their homes, and then hope is kind of the alternative to that. At Homeboy, we always talk about hope has an address, and so we're trying to offer to the city of L.A. We also want to announce how morally reprehensible it is that folks are being separated and children from their parents and families ripped apart. So that's why we're doing this.
It was very important for me to show up to this event because I am a daughter of a street vendor, so everything that is happening here in L.A., it breaks my heart, and I know very much that street vendors already go through so much. And to just see what's happening and how they're being impacted, it's so beautiful to see the community come out and support. And so we're out here with Brown Issue, selling some T-shirts, where it is our hope that people come out and buy these T-shirts so we can fundraise $5,000 that will go straight to Homeboy Industries' Hope Alley event.
So far, I see the community coming together, which is a beautiful, beautiful thing. And I mean, everything, you know, selling out, and it's amazing with everything going on right now. I know some people are in fear, but for all of us to be able to come out today and show up and show out for L.A., we're standing for what's right, and we're standing to support the people.
Because everybody's looking for ways to resist the cruelty of this moment. And then this feels like homies and homegirls from, again, different neighborhoods who are connected to a higher love, a higher purpose, and something beyond themselves. And so that's, it's win-win-win all over the place.
New Street Smart program for sidewalk repairs. LAWA awards airlines in the LAX Fly Quieter Program and the Veterans Employer of the Year. These stories up next on City Beat.
Councilmember John Lee has officially launched a new pilot program to address sidewalk repairs in the northwest San Fernando Valley. The pilot program, known as Street Smart, will begin in Granada Hills with an initial investment of $200,000. The pilot will take on sidewalk repairs through the council member's office, using small crews to deliver faster and more affordable results. According to Lee, the program is proactive, fixing damage before it worsens or becomes more expensive to repair. Lee added that the Street Smart pilot would reduce trip hazards, lower long-term costs, and make neighborhoods safer for everyone. For more information, visit cd12.lacity.gov. Los Angeles World Airport's LAWA has announced the winners for the 2024 LAX Fly Quieter Program. The program is designed to encourage airlines to pursue noise abatement and take voluntary noise reduction measures where feasible. Noise levels are monitored in residential communities, and carriers must limit their early turns, certain nighttime departures, and maintenance engine run-up at night. According to LAWA, choosing to fly quieter supports a shared commitment to safe, efficient, and sustainable operations at Los Angeles International Airport, LAX. In the major airline category, United, American, and Southwest were awarded gold, silver, and bronze respectively. For more information, visit lawa.org/news-releases. The Los Angeles Department of Water and Power, LADWP, has been recognized as the 2025 Veterans Employer of the Year. The award from the California Employer Advisory Council commended the LADWP for hiring, training, promoting, and retaining U.S. military veterans. According to the LADWP, military training fosters discipline, leadership, and a work ethic that can transfer to utility roles. In addition, flexible work arrangements are made for those in the military reserves. In 2024, the LADWP established the Veterans Alliance for Leadership, Outreach, and Recognition, or VALOR, to focus on veteran employees. The group now has 200 members. For more information, visit ladwpnews.com.
At a time when reading is in decline, The Big Read wants to bring everyone together over a good book. It's like one big book club or reading group, which connects everyone to the larger cultural themes of life in Los Angeles.
The NEA Big Read Program is the National Endowment for the Arts program. The National Endowment for the Arts is a federal agency that supports and advocates and advances culture, arts in the United States. The goal of The Big Read is to inspire reading and to bring communities together through a shared good book. The NEA commissioned a study of literacy and reading in the United States, and it was noted that reading was on a decline. As we know currently, reading is a lifelong skill that's going to benefit each of us. How the program works, Los Angeles selects a book based really on what is important to us, what are the issues that we're dealing with, and really, what is our programming potential? So what we do is that we offer a book for free to every single reader in Los Angeles that wants to read the book. The program is really divided into two phases. The first program is reading. We have like the largest, most exciting, fun, dynamic book club in Los Angeles. We host reading groups at different community spaces. We have focused on novels, poetry, essays. After the book is read, then our partners host public programs throughout Los Angeles. So for example, if you're reading a book and you want to go to a museum, that museum likely has an activity that is tied thematically to the book. There are music festivals, book festivals, film screenings, art workshops, exhibitions, concerts. What the program really wants to do in Los Angeles is that we want to offer readers the opportunity to read a good book, to connect with each other, and then to go visit places that are cultural places, historic places, where they can connect and have an even more rich and intense experience of the story, the author, or the book's themes. The way that Angelenos can participate is they call Cultural Affairs, or they check out our website, and they have information about where The Big Read is. They can ask for a book, the books are free. They can go to any of our program partners, which are throughout Los Angeles, including the library, the public schools. We have a program that not only offers reading for pleasure, but we seek to bring people in civically, to make them aware of city programs, how we connect with one another, to be more mindful about the world around them.
It's time to say an yong to one of L.A.'s favorite celebrations, the Lotus Festival. This year's special focus was on South Korea, highlighting activities, performances, and cultural showcases for all to enjoy.
So we are here at Echo Park Lay in the heart of CD13, celebrating another edition of the Lotus Festival. And this year, we are celebrating South Korea, part of the culture. We love the food, we love the K-pop dramas, so we're here to celebrate everything they bring to the city.
This is a big event for the City Department of Recreation and Parks. So it's something we do every year. It's a part of our council office, CD13, CD1, and CD10 this year. So we're very happy to bring this event free for the whole community and whole public.
The event includes two stages with a variety of entertainment from the Asian and Pacific Islander communities, as well as various food vendors. We have a children's area, as well as various vendor booths. So this is an annual event, just really just bring out the community to celebrate the diverse cultures within the city of Los Angeles.
So the dragon boat races are a big event. They're always very competitive through our council offices. So it's a good way to come out here and show the community that we can still have fun.
Korean culture in a way already really emphasizes community. And so especially what we're doing, Korean drumming, which is called tamur nori, really emphasizes harmony. That's why all our instruments are round. That's because it really wants to connect everyone together. I just really want to appreciate the Lotus Festival for recognizing our country.
So events like this bring community together. If you look around, it's not just the Korean community that's here, but we see Latinos, we see all kinds of folks. To really celebrate one culture and show the diversity of Los Angeles, it's really important to uplift our diversity, because that's what makes the city of Los Angeles what it is.
Walking in our light is just one of many imaginative expressions emanating from the Tasco Theater. Angelenos taking part express gratitude for those who nurture the light within, and nourishing that creativity can be said to be the Tasco's raison d'etre.
The Tasco Theater is located in Canoga Park. There is so much already here to offer, cultural events, performances, folks do annual Dia de los Muertos festivals, there is art walks, there is musical events, there's jazz, and I feel like we have the privilege to be added in that offering. The space had been left a little bit weary, and so when the city came in to renovate the space, it was offered another chance to breathe new life into the arts here. The Tasco Theater is here for everyone. It is here for young artists who are just starting out, to the professional artists who are here to dream up their new vision, and we're here for the community at large at all of our community events. One of our signature events is called Walking in our Light. This idea of how we help people to encourage them to think about the light that they bring and to show appreciation for those who helped to nurture that light. So from that idea, we thought, well, let's walk in our light. Let us have stories along the way where people can stop and hear performances and storytelling of other people saying, this is my light, this is how I shine it, and these are the people I want to show appreciation to. So we do this walk around the block, and then we end up with a little gathering, performances inside, and lots of time to just reflect on, yeah, this is my light, you know? And these are the people who've helped me get there. Our communities don't always see what the city of Los Angeles provides them, providing access to the arts. Says to me, that's a city that's proud of the stories it wants to tell, the people who want to tell them, and the ways that they want to tell them. A space like this gives opportunity for folks of all ages, cultures, experience, to say, I can be seen, I can be heard, and I'm walking in these doors, and it feels welcoming, it feels nurturing, and people are excited to listen to me and to hear me. We don't have that all the time. So it's a live space that's here to welcome and nurture those sparks of inspiration and vision. There's a few ways to find us. We are always on social media, so we are on Instagram. We have a Facebook page. You can go to the Department of Cultural Affairs, their website, you'll find the Tasco Theater, it may take a few clicks here and there, but we try to stay present in any way that we can.
In this week's Things to Do, head to Little Tokyo for the Nisei Week Grand Parade. Learn more about L.A.'s aqueduct and catch up on the movie adventures of Sonic the Hedgehog. All this up next on Things to Do.
Join the Nisei Week Japanese Festival for a showcase of cultural events happening in and around Little Tokyo. On Sunday, August 10th, it's the Nisei Week Grand Parade. L.A. City's Department of Cultural Affairs is the float sponsor, and spectators will see the festival queen and her court, and enjoy a host of music, dance, and parade performances with community involvement. Line up along Central Avenue for the parade starting at 4:00 p.m., or take your place along Second Street, San Pedro, or First Street. Celebrate Japanese culture in Little Tokyo at Nisei Week Grand Parade on Sunday, August 10th at 4:00 p.m. For more information, visit nisewek.org. Granada Hills is celebrating its 100th anniversary this year with a series of events. On Saturday, August 9th, join the Los Angeles Public Library at the Granada Hills branch to learn all about the L.A. aqueduct and how water has shaped the growth of L.A. Guest speaker Jack Feldman will tell the story of the aqueduct and the challenges to bringing water to the city. Feldman retired after 36 years with the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power and is an avid local historian. Join L.A. Public Library at the Granada Hills branch to learn about the aqueduct on Saturday, August 9th at 10:00 a.m. For more, visit lapl.org/events. Join Councilmember Adrien Nazarian for a free community movie screening at Tiara Street Park. On Sunday, August 10th, the free movie is Sonic 3. This 2024 action-adventure comedy film is based on the Sonic video game series. Head to Tiara Street Park for free screening of Sonic 3 on Sunday, August 10th at 7:30. For more information, visit the Instagram of Councilmember Nazarian at @cd2losangels. And that's a look at some things to do. And that's a look at some things to do.
And that's all for this week. I'm Susan Huckle, and from all of us here at L.A. This Week, thank you so much for joining us. Remember that you can watch us online anytime at lacityview.org. We're also on Instagram, Facebook, X, and YouTube. See you next time for more L.A. This Week.
Did you know the average L.A. resident uses about 89 gallons of water each day? Challenge yourself to conserve. Turning off the faucet when you brush saves up to 10 gallons of water. Taking a five-minute or less shower saves up to 15 gallons of water. Washing only full loads of laundry saves up to 30 gallons of water. And fixing a running toilet can save up to 50 gallons of water. Keep it in mind all day, every day. It's water conservation the L.A. way.
Good morning and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of your Los Angeles City Council. Today is Wednesday, the sixth day of August in the year 2025. My name is Marquis Harris Dawson. I serve as president of this council. Public comment will be taken in person for this morning's meeting. And we will plan on an hour of public councils, a public comment, 60 minutes of public comment. So folks be aware of that. Madam Clerk, if we can begin our proceedings by calling the roll?
Yes, sir. Bloomingfield, Harris Dawson, Hernandez, Hutt, Hurdado, Lee, McCosker, Nazarian, Padilla, Park, Price, Rahman, Rodriguez, Soto Martinez, Yaroslavski, 11 members present in court, Mr. President.
All right, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes of August 5th, 2025.
Councilmember Rahman moves. Councilmember Hurdado seconds. What's next?
Commandatory resolutions for approval.
Councilmember Bloomingfield moves. Councilmember Nazarian seconds. We run through our agenda.
Yes, sir. Items 1 and 2 are items which public hearings have been held. Items 3 through 23 are items which public hearings have not been held. Item 24 is a closed session item for which public hearing has been held. And finally, items 25 through 28 are closed session items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
All right, without objection, those items are before us. Specials members, do we have any specials? Mr. Price?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, to call special, item 2 for comment.
Item 2 for comments from Mr. Price?
Thank you.
Okay, item 2 for two members. Any other specials on this side? All right, any specials on this side? Councilmember Hurdado.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to continue item 3 and item 4 to August 13th.
All right.
Thank you.
Without objection, those items will be continued. Any other specials? Councilmember Hernandez.
17 and 22 for a separate vote.
17 and 22 for a separate vote. Councilmember Rahman.
Could I please continue item 5 to September 23rd?
Item 5 continued to September 23rd without objection. That'll be the order. Any other specials members? All right, seeing no other specials. Madam Clerk, what items are available to vote on at this time?
Right now, council may now vote on item number 1, sir.
All right, let's open the roll on item number 1. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
All right, what's next?
That is all is available for council to vote on at this moment, so...
Including the separate votes and comments ones?
Oh, yes, because 17 and 22 are separate votes. However, public comment has not been satisfied for those items.
Got it, all right. All right, so what's next?
Council can go into public comment if it wishes.
All right, let's go to public comment.
Mr. President, I apologize. Item 2 is available for council to vote on, and Mr. Price and Mr. Soto Martinez have comments on item 2, sir.
All right, we'll open up item number 2 and hear from Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I want to take a moment to highlight item 2 this morning. A few years ago, with your support, we launched the largest guaranteed basic income program in the country, reaching over 3,000 individuals who were on the brink of homelessness. It was a bold and necessary step to provide stability and dignity to our most vulnerable residents. What you have before you today represents the next phase of that monumental work. My office, along with Councilmember Soto Martinez, have each committed $1 million from our discretionary funds to expand this effort. The next round of GPI will provide $1,000 per month for two years to transitional aged youth and survivors of intimate partner violence. These groups were carefully chosen based on the findings from independent research institutions that evaluated our first program. The data showed that these populations were among the most vulnerable and also saw the greatest positive outcomes. This would not have been possible without the leadership and dedication of the Community Investment Families Department and their fearless leader, Abigail Marquez. We are deeply grateful for their continued commitment to uplifting families and preventing homelessness. And colleagues, I ask for your aye vote on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Soto Martinez.
Yes, thank you so much, Council President. And thank you so much, Councilmember Price, for giving a brief summary of some of the work that was done before I got here. And let me just say, it's been wonderful to build off of that work, and I'm very happy to partner with you on this issue. And, you know, this motion is about continuing an incredibly successful guaranteed basic income program, as Councilmember Price mentioned, is one of the largest in the country. In 2022 and 2023, a group of low-income Angelinos were given $1,000 a month for 12 months with no strings attached, and we saw life-changing results. Families were able to put food on the table. Workers finally had the flexibility to leave dead-end jobs and have economic movement to a better job. And something that gave me a lot of hope was survivors of intimate partner violence were finally able to leave those abusive relationships because they had the means to do it. And so today, we are building on the success of that program with a new $2 million investment. And this next phase will continue to support survivors of intimate partner violence, the group that saw the most dramatic improvements in that pilot program, and expand, something I feel very personally connected to because of my district, expand to include transitional aged youth, including queer and trans youth who face significant system barriers to stability and employment. And we know many of these folks are exiting the foster care system and maybe just need a little bit of support. And for the first time, we're pairing these direct payments with job training through the Hospitality Training Academy, which has a near 100% success rate in placing their graduates into high-quality, good-paying union jobs. Colleagues, that has the potential of have truly transformative, life-changing things happen for people. So I want to thank CIFD Department, we're here, we're with our general managers and assistant general managers, who have led much of this work, and the folks that are not here today from your team, please give them a big thanks and so much recognition for the work they do. And so again, I just really want to thank Councilmember Price, his team, and everyone who's worked on the first pilot program, because now we have the know-how and know what to do in this next phase. in this next phase. And I hope that, as this program continues, we can look at poverty in a very different light. Many folks did not, were not born into this country with many of the privileges that a lot of, that a lot of people have, including myself, I have a lot of privilege. And so giving folks an opportunity to move up through life, having just a little bit economic stability, can have really life-changing effects, and it could be good for the city and good for so many people. So I also urge for your I-vote, and I look forward to seeing this report evolve in the coming, in the coming years. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Soto Martinez. And another bit of praise for Councilmember Price for bringing this to the city of Los Angeles. You know, this program was pioneered by Mayor Tubbs in Stockton, California. They had incredible resorts here. Our program was much bigger. I was happy to participate, be able to participate in it in the first go-round that we did. And in addition to all the things that Mr. Price and Mr. Soto Martinez pointed out, the other thing that we sought to measure in the study was the effect on the neighborhood that people, that we invested in. Because you invest in one family in a neighborhood, we all know, one family, one household on a block can make a difference for that whole block, and one block can make a difference for a neighborhood. And so we noticed that community violence, which we all pay for in our public safety budget, which takes up, you know, nearly 62/3 of our budget, it reduces the strain on those resources when we invest in those families. And we saw that here in a very clear way. In addition to the fact, the number-one thing people did was either stop their dead-end job and took a class, or got a certification to allow them to get a better job. We know that the people, and this is not rocket science at all, the people with the best quality of life in our society are the people who have economic security. It's not complicated at all. And so to the extent that we can provide that to people, I think we do better as, not just for those families and those individuals, but we do better as a city, as a community, and as a neighborhood. So thank you both, and I join you in requesting an I-vote on this item. Seeing no other comments on this, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
All right, and now we'll go to a public comment, and we will go with public comment, folks, so everybody knows, we will go until 11:25. So everybody here, if somebody comes in and they're wondering, we're going with public comment till 11:25. We'll take as many speakers as we can between now and 11:25. Thank you so much.
To people providing public comment, when it's your turn to speak, please state which of the agenda items you'd like to speak to. You will have one minute per item, up to three minutes total for the items open for public comment. We will tell you when your time is up. When speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you are not on topic, or if we cannot tell whether you are on topic, you will get one brief warning from me or the Council President. At that point, you need to get immediately and clearly on topic. If you do not do so, or if you again stray off-topic, you will forfeit the rest of your speaking time, and we will move on to the next speaker. The items open for public comment on the agenda are items six through 23 and items 25 through 28. So again, the items open for public comment are items six through 23 and items 25 through 28. Please note that items three, four, and five have been continued and are not open for public comment. Members of the public may also speak for up to one minute for general public comment. During general public comment, members of the public may speak to any of the items or anything else in the city's subject matter jurisdiction. I have a couple more announcements, if I can have the interpreters make this first one aloud to the room, please? If you require a Spanish-language interpreter, please make sure to pause every few sentences so the interpreters can interpret.
Si requieren interpretación de inglés, de español e inglés durante su comentario público, por favor, de una pausa después de cada frase para permitir la interpretación.
Don't worry, we will pause your time while the interpreters are interpreting, so you will get the same amount of time as everyone else. Thank you.
Y no se preocupen, vamos a dar una pausa a su tiempo para que tenga la misma cantidad de tiempo que los demás.
A couple final announcements. As the Council President has stated, we will go until 11:25 for public comment. So in order to help us run an efficient public comment and include as many people as possible, please follow these instructions. The order in which public commenters are called up is at random. It is randomly generated. So please wait until you hear the name, the name you signed up under read aloud before lining up. After you hear the name that you signed up under read aloud, you can line up in any order on your left-hand side of the council chambers. And I believe the clerk's office has one announcement that's not related to the public comment instructions. Go ahead.
Just a point of clarification, for the continuance on item number five, Councilmember Rahman, the 23rd, September 23rd, you want to change it to September 19, 2025. That's new continuation date. Thank you.
I'll begin calling names.
Good morning. Which items would you? Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
General comment.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
Due to the refusal of any accountability, transparency, cruel and unusual punishment, and the lack of any decency at all, all of the juvenile detention centers and men's central jail need to be closed immediately. To further get rid of the California Peace Officers Bill of Rights, it protects lewd and abusive cops and is a threat to our neighborhoods.
Which items would you like to speak to?
General public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Jessica Melendez with Tres Altas from District 9. This year, Los Angeles has been hit by several disasters, from the devastating wildfires to the ongoing terrorizing and kidnapping of Angelinos, which undocumented or not, they deserve protections at such a critical moment. As a result, these disasters, of these disasters, low-income workers have lost their jobs, making them more economically insecure and closer to eviction and homelessness. I also see that you all have raised the Olympic flags, a reminder that all ayes will be on the city of L.A. in the coming years. They already are, but what about us, right? What about your constituents? Without fair renter laws, L.A. will continue to see rising homelessness overcrowding and economic strain on working and middle-class families. I urge the city council to adopt keep-L.A. house demands for the RSO formula, rent increases based on 60% CPI, all items, a cap of 3%, and no floor, no rent banking, banking, and no bumps for utilities and additional occupants.
Before the next speaker, I'd like to call a few more names. Nancy Villanueva, Dominga Solorsano, and Rudy Chavez.
Good morning. My name is Elizabeth Hernandez, and first of all, I would like for all of you guys to stop having side conversations and pay attention because...
Speaker, are you here for a general public comment?
Yes.
Okay, so you have one minute. Sorry. And just before you start our time, just for, if you're here just for general public comment, it is helpful if you let us know which items you're here for. Once we know, we will set the time. Go ahead, sorry. You have one minute for general public comment.
My name is Elizabeth Hernandez, and please, I'm asking you guys to stop having side conversations, because everyone here is taking time from their family, from their jobs, from their daily life, for you guys to listen to them. And we want you guys to bring the LARSO formula and adopt it and vote on it. The residents of L.A. needs it. And on the side, please, I want to talk to Mr. Curran Price. We have not heard from your office. How many more children has to die? How many more accidents do we have to have at Vernon and Wasworth? We would charge to reach out to your office. We had a meeting on the fourth. Nobody from your office happened to show up to our meeting. I don't know what's going on with your staff. They're ignoring our calls, they're ignoring our, our community. Community has been calling directly to your office. We had collector's signatures, we had door knock everywhere in the, around the neighborhood. We've been in the farmer's market outside your office, and we have no response. Please, reach out back to ACE and the Education Chapter.
So before the next speaker begins, just, we appreciate your patience. I expect us or suspect that we will hear some highly offensive comments. The quickest way to get through it is to not disrupt this public comment. After the next speaker finishes, then they will not be allowed to speak during the rest of the meeting. Good morning, Mr. Herman. You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Impermissible prior restraint for the record.
So would you like to begin with your general public comment, or do you want to speak to the items?
No, asshole, I'm going through all items and non-agenda public comment.
Then please stick to the items for your first three minutes. Go ahead.
In Mahaland Drive, we are building a fence like Donald Trump. Donald Trump has done America a good thing by providing Mahaland Highway under Hollywood sign in Council District CD4 to prevent the crisis on illegal activity, illegal criminals, and illegal homelessness, Ramen Nudo. And then I look at item number one in Council District 9 and 13. Fuck the fire!
So item number one is not open for public comment. Public comment was previously held at committee.
Okay, so number six. Number six talks about weed abatement. And many of us already know that smoking weed is good for you, and cleaning up after you smoke a blunt like smoking scan.
This has nothing to do with the item on the agenda. You have been warned previously to stick to the agendas. It is about weed abatement. You have now forfeited your comment on the items, moved to general public comment. You've been warned multiple times.
Item number 14, just say...
You have one minute for general public comment.
Ah, 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 so now we see that the United States, under Brandenburg versus Ohio, get ready, everybody, Brandenburg versus Ohio for the record, yes, it's very well noted that the courts, and this is a Supreme Court decision, based on not racial dog-eating Korean attorney, this is about Koreans that eat dog that don't understand the dog language that I'm about to say for the record.
So this is your general public comment, but the Brown Act does not allow you to be repetitive.
Yeah, yeah, shut the fuck up. I'm on the clock. I'm on the clock. I'm on the fucking clock. Shut the fuck up. Now, the significant portions that could be understood were, how far is the nigger going to yell? U.S. 395, 444, 1969, everybody. And here it is for the record.
Mr. Herman, we're going to hold your time. You were previously warned for using the N-word in any of its variations, which is a violation of Council Rule 7. You continued to use the N-word. You actually disrupted this meeting, and I've had to stop the meeting to warn you to not violate Rule 7. You have forfeited your speaking time. If you disrupt the meeting again, you will be subject to removal.
And again, thank you, everyone, for your patience. Next speaker?
Sí, buenos días. Mi nombre es Sofía Mendoza, y voy a dar el comentario público.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Sofía Mendoza, and I'm going to give public comment. Tiene un minuto, señora.
Soy miembro de ACE y vivo en el Distrito 9.
I'm a member of ACE living in District 9.
Las continuas redadas federales de inmigración y los drásticos recortes de presupuesto federal para familias de bajos ingresos.
The increasing ICE rates due to, on behalf of the federal government, and the budget constraints on lower-income people. Continúe.
Han agravado significativamente esta crisis.
Have made this crisis even more grave.
Si bien la ciudad debería estar tomando muchas medidas para estabilizar a los inquilinos ahora mismo.
The city should be taking as many measures as possible to stabilize the citizens right now.
Una acción concreta que el consejo debe tomar ahora mismo es actualizar la fórmula de aumento de renta del Larso para que no suba la renta más del 3% sin límite mínimo.
So one of the things that the city should be doing is adopting the Larso ordinance so that the rent is capped at no more than 3%.
Les pido a los concejales del sur centro que voten sí a estas medidas porque hemos llamado, mandándoles correos, y no responden a nuestros correos ni a nuestras llamadas.
We are asking specifically the South Central representatives to approve this because we've been calling you, we've been emailing you, and you won't answer.
Les pido que pongan esta medida de Larso ya en la agenda, por favor.
We're asking you to put this Larso measurement in the agenda now, please.
I'd like to call a few more names first. Maria Rafael, Peter V., and Jonathan Diaz.
Buenos días. Mi nombre es Dominga Solorsano.
Good morning. My name is... My name is Dominga Solorsano, and I need a translation.
Okay, so you have one, is it general public comment?
Es comentario público general?
Yes.
So you'll have one minute, and if you could let the speaker know, you can adjust the mic even more if you'd like, whatever's comfortable.
Sí, tiene un minuto, y puede ajustar el micrófono si es que usted necesita para estar más cómoda. Si bien la ciudad debería estar tomando muchas medidas para estabilizar a los inquilinos ahora mismo, una acción concreta que el consejo debe tomar ahora mismo es actualizar la fórmula de aumento de renta del Larso para que no suba la renta más del 3% límite mínimo. Ay, por favor, necesito traducción.
The city needs to take measures to stabilize the renters, and one of those measures that the city can take is by approving the Larso rent cap at 3%.
Por favor, se les pide, este, por favor, porque yo como madre de bajos recursos, mi nombre es Dominga Solorsano, y vivo en el Distrito 9, y soy miembro de ACE, y por favor, se les pido porque yo como persona de bajos recursos me impacta al saber que suba la renta si mi esposo tiene muy bajos recursos.
I'm asking, I'm asking as a mother, as a low-income mother, tenant of District 9, I'm asking you, please, to put this on the agenda because I am being very impacted. My husband is low-income as well.
Sí, me siento muy nerviosa porque mi esposo también es de muchas horas, pocas horas de trabajo, y estoy muy impactada por todo esto que vaya a suceder con nosotros.
I am very impacted and very anxious with everything that could happen, as both me and my husband are low-income.
Good morning. My name is Maria Breones, and I'm a proud member of AVE. First thing is that we need to agendize Larso ASAP, not tomorrow, not next year. It is very urgent that we get the rent cap to 3%. We'll keep it that way, because landlords have benefited for years and years and years and years. It's almost 40 years that that hasn't changed. And we, the tenants, have no profit at all. We cannot continue doing this. We have to stop it. We have to sometime level, you know, the situation between the tenants and the landlords. Only, it's only the big corporations that are paying your seats right here, your vote, no, right? Or yes, maybe yes. So it is important that you guys pay attention to what the tenants are asking. We are not asking for something that is trivial or something that we cannot do. You can do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Which items would you like to speak to?
Mi nombre es Irma Martínez.
My name is-
Soy miembro de ACE.
My name is Irma Martínez, and I am a member of ACE.
So you, one minute for general public comment.
Un minuto para comentario público general.
Pues yo soy una persona ya de la edad que tengo, y como ustedes sabrán, todo el problema que hay ahora para poder trabajar.
Well, I am, you know, I am an older person, and as you guys know, there's a lot of difficulty in being able to work.
Estoy enferma, pero sin embargo así he luchado, trabajar para sobrevivir.
I am ill, but as you know, I'm still fighting to be able to work, to be able to survive.
Pero el problema es que ahorita no se puede sacar ni para la renta.
But the problem is that right now you can't even make ends meet to afford rent.
Y pues uno quiere tratar de hacer lo mejor de trabajar, pero no se puede.
And you know, you want to do the best you can, working as hard as you can, but it's just not possible.
Pedimos que, por favor, apoyen a la campaña LARSO.
We're asking you to please support the LARSO campaign.
Para actualizar la fórmula de aumento de renta del ARSO para que suba la renta más del 3% sin límite mínimo.
To update LARSO, the LARSO formula, to cap the rent at 3% with no floor.
Which items would you like to speak to?
General public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
My name is Peter. I'm here to speak on RSO and the need for greater rent control. Los Angeles is a city of renters, where people's ability to live in RSO rent-controlled apartments is the only thing keeping a roof over their heads. In a city where nearly 100,000 people receive eviction notices over the last year, indexing RSO increases to 60% CPI and creating a 3% hard cap on rent increases is essential to prevent thousands of more people being pushed onto the streets of this city. We need adoption of the LARSO rent cap now. Thank you.
Buenos días.
Good morning.
Mi nombre es Maria Rafael.
Good morning. My name is Maria Rafael.
Soy señora de la tercera edad. Estoy aquí para pedirles de un favor para todos los que estamos aquí presentes y las personas ausentes que son de bajos recursos.
I am here as a senior citizen, as a person here asking you guys for a favor for everyone that is here and everyone that was not able to be present for people of lower income.
Si bien la ciudad debería estar tomando muchas medidas para estabilizar a los inquilinos ahora mismo, una acción concreta que el consejo debe tomar ahora mismo es actualizar la fórmula de aumento de renta del ARSO para que no suba la renta más del 3%.
The city should be taking steps to stabilize the tenants, and one of the concrete ways that the city can do that is by adopting the LARSO formula and capping the rent at 3%.
Por lo mismo, soy miembro de la ACE, y ellos están apoyando para que no suban la renta en el Distrito 8, y les agradezco por su apoyo a todos los integrantes que están aquí escuchando nuestra voz.
And I am a member of ACE, and I live in District 8, and they are here to support us, and so I'm giving thanks to all the people that have arrived here to lend us support.
Sí, actualizar la fórmula de aumento de renta es la LARSO de-
Speaker, your time has expired.
Para que-
Ora dora, su tiempo se le ha expirado.
Para que no suba la renta más del 3%.
So we have to move on to the next speaker.
Please cap the rent at 3%. Gracias.
Before the next speaker, I'd like to call a few more names. Brendan Fisher, 24 Hours, and Kevin Ramsey.
Good morning. You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, City Attorney Smoking Scan. Start with item number 21. (Singing) One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty, sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four, sixty-five, sixty-six, sixty-seven, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, seventy, seventy-one, seventy-two, seventy-three, seventy-four, seventy-five, seventy-six, seventy-seven, seventy-eight, seventy-nine, eighty, eighty-one, eighty-two, eighty-three, eighty-four, eighty-five, eighty-six, eighty-seven, eighty-eight, eighty-nine, ninety, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-nine, ninety-ten, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, one thousand, one hundred, one hundred and fifty, 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 let's go!
Before the next speaker, I'd like to call a few more names. HHH, Pablo McCall, and Sekivu Hutchinson.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
General public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute.
Hi, City Council. My name is Brendan, and I'm a resident here in Council District 14, and I'm here in support of the Keep L.A. House Coalition's demands for LARSO reform, specifically to lower the allowable range of rent increase from 3% to 8%, down to 0% to 3%, and to get rid of the additional utility and new occupant bumps. You know, when we look at the fires, we look at the ICE raids, it really becomes apparent that the only groups who are actively looking out for the community are the communities themselves. And so, especially in the context of the ICE raids and the LARSO reform, and your inaction on both of those fronts, it really begs the question whether or not you truly believe yourselves to be representatives of the people, or if you're content to, according to Kenneth Mahia, rake in a nearly $250,000 salary and act as, in effect, aristocrats in waiting, trying not to disrupt the status quo that has benefited your wealthy donors so much. Thank you.
General public comment. Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
My name is Sekivu Hutchinson. I'm with the Women's Leadership Project and the Standing for Black Girls Coalition based in CD8. I appreciate that the council is providing dedicated income to intimate partner violence survivors. However, we demand that you go further to ensure that black women and girls are prioritized in the allocation of this funding. It has been over two years since the City Human Rights Department released a report indicating that black women are grossly overrepresented in sexual and domestic violence victims, as well as those who are murdered and missing. While the council and Mayor Bass have been proactive about protecting other vulnerable communities, black women and girls are the least protected and the most brutalized in L.A. Our dead bodies are literally underlining this epidemic of black genocide that extends from South L.A. across the nation. So Councilmember Harris Dawson, we are asking again that you stand for black girls and work with the community utilizing all those Destination Crenshaw millions to create a safe youth space in honor of 16-year-old CD8 murder victim Tiana Theis that provides prevention education services and programming for black women, girls, and queer youth. Stand for black girls and prioritize our lives. Put your money where your damn mouth is.
Before the next speaker, I'd like to call a few more names. Suzette Shaw, Manny Reedy, and Raoul Diaz.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Public commentation.
So you have one minute.
So good morning, everybody. My name is Pablo. I live in District 9. June of 6, 2025, I was arrested by immigration at my workplace, and I held this at the month, I held there in a month and three days. So I would wish, I don't wish this to anyone affected in my housing, like many others. We also here in the homes and low income. I cannot work at the moment. I have a bracelet in my food. We need to cover rent bills, so we're looking, we're asking for your support because how affected we are. We asked for the more fair formula, the rent increase. Many of us who were affected and low-income people cannot cover these expenses. And we also, we ask that for you, schedule with support the rent control campaign from 0%, maximum 3%, maximum increases. This is the time for consulting the updated rent increase formula to better protect tenants and promote housing stability. Los Angeles cannot climb the B centauric city of these abandoned tenants.
Speaker, your time has expired. Next speaker.
True centauric means keeping the people in-
So, speaker, we have to move on to the next speaker. And as the next speaker's coming up, so, members of the audience, the Brown Act requires us to treat everybody equally, so it's not that we don't want to hear from you, it's just we have to adhere very closely to the amount of time prescribed in the council rules. If for any reason that you are unable to finish your public comment, or if you have, if we run out of time to hear from you today, you can always come to a future meeting. You can also provide written public comment at lacouncil.com. Again, that's lacouncil.com. That URL is at the top of every council agenda, and I'm told that you do not need a council file number to provide general public comment. So, good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Buenos días. Mi nombre es Mateo Cristobal. Yo tengo este comentario este público.
Hi, good morning. My name is Mateo Cristobal, and I have a general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
Un minuto, adelante.
Vengo aquí, yo soy víctima de la redada. Yo estuve detenido seis semanas en Adelanto, California, y ahorita estoy preocupado por lo que me ha afectado, por la renta, por la comida, no puedo trabajar, y ando, tengo hongrientes en los pies.
Un momento. Thank you. I'm here because I am a victim of the raids. I was detained for six weeks in Adelanto, California, and now I'm concerned about the other effects that I'm facing. I have to pay my rent, I have to buy food, and I can't work because I have an ankle bracelet.
Y estoy aquí para que ustedes me apoyen. Yo soy miembro de la organización ACE.
And I'm here for your support, for you to support us. I am a member of ACE.
Y eso lo que nos pasó es algo horrible, y no deseamos a nadie. Y yo soy de la Sector 9, y vengo por mis bajos recursos, no tengo como mantenerme, no puedo trabajar ahora, y necesito apoyo a toda la persona como yo.
And what has happened to us is horrible, and I wouldn't wish it on anyone. I am a resident of District 9, and I'm low-income, and I don't have enough money to be able to support myself, and unfortunately, I'm not able to work. So I need your help. I need your support.
Gracias.
Thank you. That's it.
I'd like to call a few more names. Maria Ponse, Gloria Santos, and Bryant Odega.
So I see those people coming up. As we wait, just FYI, we've taken about 30 minutes of public comment already, as previously stated. For anybody who has just now come into the rooms, we are going to take public comment all the way up to 11:25, so we're about halfway done. Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Buenos días. Mi nombre es Gloria Santos. Necesito traducción, por favor.
Hi, good morning. My name is Gloria Santos, and I need translation, please.
Mis comentarios son públicos.
And I have a general public comment.
Okay.
Vengo del Distrito 14. También vengo con apoyo en la organización ACE.
I am a resident of District 14, and I come here in support of ACE.
También vengo con la problemática de las rentas. Les estamos pidiendo que las rentas no suban más.
And I'm here to come and talk about the rent situation, and we're all here to ask for the rent to not continue going up.
En ese momento, nuestra comunidad está siendo perseguida. En ese momento, nuestra comunidad, no todos estamos trabajando.
In our community, we're being attacked and we're being targeted, and not everyone in our community is able to work at this point.
Y ustedes como gobierno están, no, están pidiendo, no quieren más gente indigente, pero ustedes mismos están haciendo que, que esta, que este problema sea más grande.
So you as a government are saying you don't want more homeless people, but you're not helping with this problem.
Porque con el aumento de, de esas rentas, la gente ya no puede pagar más.
Because what's going on is, as the rent continues to increase, you're gonna have people who aren't gonna be able to pay anymore.
Speaker, your time has expired.
Before the next speaker, I'd like to call a few more names. Amor Jackson, Blanca Pocheco, and Mateo White.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Hi, good morning. General public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
All right. My name is Bryant Odega. I live in Council District 15, Haytim. I am a teacher, renter, member of United Teachers for Los Angeles, Working Families Party, and I'm here with ACE. Working families are under attack. Our communities are being raided by ICE. Kids are afraid to come to school, and families are being priced out of the neighborhoods that they've known all their lives. The least City Council can do is adopt the demands of the Keep L.A. House Coalition, stabilize the rents, keep it at 3%, no rent banking. House Coalition, stabilize the rents, keep it at three percent, no rent banking, and no bumps for utilities and additional occupants. Schools are on the front lines of these crises. What happens outside the schools impacts what happens inside. Over 20 students are experiencing homelessness. Not a single first-year teacher, bus driver, cap tier worker can afford to live in, to rent in LA. That's an injustice. It's an injustice. Cap the rent at three percent, keep families together, and protect our most marginalized communities. Thank you.
Which items would you like to speak to?
Public comic, please.
Okay, before you begin, I'm gonna ask whoever's yelling out, please do not yell out when somebody's at the podium to provide their public comment. I'm seeing fingers pointing, is that at the gentleman with the white beard? Okay, so sir in the white beard and the black t-shirt, this is your first and only warning, please do not disrupt this meeting. I've heard you yell out multiple times. I'm sorry. So can you repeat which items, a general public comment? Okay, so you have one minute, go ahead.
Okay. Hello, my name is Amor Jackson. I'm a student at Kendra High School, and I'm a member of the Standing for Black Girls Coalition. I urge the council, specifically council members Harris Dawson, Hut, and Mick Oscar to create a dedicated funding program for targeted provision programs, mental health support, and safe spaces in South LA, along with access to affordable and healthy food resources for black and brown queer youth. As a teenage black girl, I have struggled to gain access to therapy and affordable food. Too many people of color, people of color can't afford or gain access to a mental health center or high-quality food in CDA and CD-15. When I go to the store, I shouldn't have to choose processed snacks or overpriced vegetables or go through a mental breakdown with nowhere to go. Listen to the voices in your community. We deserve better. I urge you to please invest and prioritize our issues now. Thank you.
Which items would you like to speak to?
Item 22, is it still, can I speak on that?
Yes, so is it just item 22?
No, general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute for item 22 and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Okay, so, um, yesterday we met with Johanne and Mar- in our president, council president's office, who promised that we would get a meeting with the community and with Keep L.A. House, so we're hoping that that'll happen ASAP. Also, we, it's been a year, and we have not heard the position of council president on Larso. We need our South Los Angeles Central leaders to stand with us. As you said, I don't know where he is, Marquise Harris Dawson, you said when something affects one family, it can affect an entire community. You said something like that just a minute ago. So cap the rent at three percent. These rent increases are causing evictions, they're also, that causes the nine percent increase in homelessness, and we know we're trying to end homelessness in the city. We door knocked and we got petitions signed. We have over 300 petitions signed to cap the rent at three percent. These were small landlords as well as tenants. So we are asking that our.
General public comment.
You agendize this meeting, Nithya Ramon and Marquise Harris Dawson and the community. We need your support right now.
Before the next speaker, before the next speaker, I'd like to call a few more names.
Just so you know, do I still have more time? I have fifty, one more minute? Okay, so as, as.
If you still have your general public comment. So you have one minute for general, I'm sorry.
Okay.
And then after which we will read out more names, so you, go ahead.
Okay, where I live in my building, this is causing a lot of problems. One of my neighbors literally just self-evicted. She is just tired of getting the rent increases. It's not gonna help to self-evict, you're gonna go somewhere and end up with another one, and it keeps the cycle going. These, these Lytec buildings and these landlords that, that abuse this system, it's, it's a really big problem. People are suffering, and then with the raids, it's not making it any better. Housing insecurity and food insecurity, and then health insurance insecurity is causing a big problem. Something has to be done. We are expecting our city council, we look to y'all, we look to you, you are our community leaders. We, we voted you in, we look to you for an answer, for help, for, for relief from the suffering. It is difficult to watch my neighbors to literally self-evict because they are, they can't afford where they live, so they go move in with a family member. That's called being homeless. Even on somebody's couch is homeless. Thank you.
Before the next speaker, I'd like to call a few more names. Sofia Mendoza, Robert Arnett, and Ama Boateng.
Okay, so, good morning. Before we begin, the gentleman who just stood up in the white beard, this is your second warning, you are now, Mr., uh, Madam President, eligible for removal if you would like. Do not disrupt this meeting.
Good morning.
Which items would you like to speak to?
I would like to speak to general republic.
Okay, so you have one minute, go ahead.
My name is Adrian Gomez. I live in CDA, and I'm an ACE member. LA is a city of renters, and rent is more unaffordable than ever. We need to do more to prevent the homelessness crisis from worsening, especially in the wake of increasing natural disasters and economic uncertainty. Despite months of warnings and a clear economic report showing the formula is unfair to tenants, council continues, continues to delay a vote to update the city's decades-old rent control rules. As a result, LA renters, many of them low-income and immigrants, are stuck with unnecessary rent hikes during both a political crisis and a housing and affordability crisis. We can't let city leaders prioritize landlords and developers over protecting the 60% of Angelenos who rent.
Before the next speaker, I'd like to call a few more names. Dorsia White, George Harrod, and Joey Mendez.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
General public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute, go ahead.
My name is Ama Boateng. I am a 17-year-old student at Hamilton High School and a man, a member of the Standing for Black Girls Coalition. I'm deeply concerned about the lack of culturally responsive community responders assigned to handle domestic violence calls. Social norms deem African-American women as masculine, strong, and resilient. So in cases of intimate partner violence, they are often dismissed or seen as deserving of their abuse, leading to repeated behaviors by their abusers. The presence of police officers when caused often escalates the violence, leading to black women being arrested and criminalized. This instills the fear that is often already prevalent in black women who are survivors of domestic violence. Though youth-led coalitions like ours are trying to change the culture over incarceration of disproportionate arrests of black women, we are often, we are often eradicate, this should be eradicated, and the city council should allocate funding for gender-based violence and prevention so our communities can thrive. Thank you, and we will be continuing to show, to hold you accountable for black women and girls.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
All right. First of all, good morning.
And which items would you like to speak to? Good morning.
Mr. Pancake would like to address the city council and speak on, um, general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute, go ahead.
Black August, 1979. Y'all know the history here in California. My name is Mr. Pancake, housing organizer, um, Los Angeles Community Action Network, um, here in, um, Council District Fourteen, native of Los Angeles. As you know, Los Angeles is the fourth-largest economy in the world. We should not have, you know, housing challenges that we have, the lack of affordable housing in our, in our city. Here today, to urge city council to adopt Keep L.A. House demands for resident, for rent stabilization ordinance, ordinance formula. Let's get real, LA. Rent is too what?
High!
Supporting affordable housing for all people, people over profits, and homelessness now.
I'd like to call a few more names. Grace, Denise Salina, and William Good.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
General public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute, go ahead.
My name is Joey Mendez, and I am with organization ACE and Education Chapter from District Nine. Rent in LA is dangerously high. It's not fair that we, the citizens, are struggling to make ends meet, especially after the raids and fires. They save for rent instead of food for their families. The fires took businesses and the raids took families, families whose were the only source of income for their, for their kids. I now address current price. We urge you that you put an actual traffic light on Vernon and Wadsworth, not a Hawk Light. We have been trying to contact you and your staff for a while. We have not heard from, from you or anyone since February. The school year is about to begin, and children will use that crosslight, because, will use that cross because it's the fastest way to get to Carver Middle School. Drivers will not, are on that street are reckless despite the, being a school zone. How many children have to die before we get that light?
Before the next speaker, I'd like to call a few more names. Robert, Mario Jose Leones, and Maria Breones.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Uh, general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute, go ahead.
Hi, everyone. My name is Grace. I'm a community organizer at Lain, and I am a resident of District One. People are losing their housing all across Los Angeles. We are in the middle of an affordability crisis, let alone the effects of the horrific wildfires earlier this year and immigration raids scaring working families from going outside, and also now federal budget cuts impacting low-income residents the most. People are losing their income streams and get closer to eviction and homelessness every day. I am urging city council to adopt Keep L.A. House demands for RSL formula, rent increases based on 60% CPI, a cap of three percent with no floor, no rent banking, no bumps for utilities and additional occupants. LA is a city of renters, and it is clear that LA is under attack from all sides, from a cost-of-living crisis and federal government overreach. We need to protect our communities by adopting these demands. Our community needs more housing and more rent stabilization laws to prevent homelessness, and the city of LA should uphold its claims of being a sanctuary city to keep people safe in their homes.
Which items would you like to speak to?
Uh, general public comment.
Okay, you have one minute, go ahead.
All right, yeah, so I'm a community organizer with Scope, um, a community organization down in South Central Los Angeles. I could say from second-hand and first-hand experience that the rent is really, is ridiculously high. Um, uh, when Mayor Bass first got into office, she said, um, that, um, she declared a state of emergency on the homelessness crisis. Um, that's why we urge the city council to adopt the Keep L.A. House demands for the RSL formula. That is, uh, rent increase based off of 60% CPI on all items, a rent cap of three percent with no floor, um, no rent banking and no bumps for utilities and, um, additional occupants. Once again, this is a crisis that needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Before the next speaker, I'd like to call a few more names. Tanya Ramon, Angelica Estrella, and Maria Sanchez.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Uh, general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute, go ahead.
All right. Good morning. I'm Mario Jose Leones, and I'm an 18-year-old member of the hashtag Standing for Black Girls Coalition. I'm here to urge the council to distribute funding to create South LA youth-serving centers that provide prevention, education, mental health, and leadership initiatives for black and brown women and girls and LGBTQ plus people of color. We demand that the many empty CDA and CD-15 buildings that surround our community be turned into facilities that can support vulnerable youth and women of color. I live on the border of South Central and Watts. I witnessed the struggle many black and brown women face due to a lack of resources. Being unhoused can cause instability in the lives of LGBTQ plus youth. I know of friends who fear of coming out to their families because of the threat of becoming a homeless. If LGBTQ plus youth can't find support in their homes, these youth-serving centers can help support LGBTQ plus youth who are forced to escape their dangerous situations. You were all voted in to serve Angelenos and use taxpayer money to help our communities. You are being watched. Those who do not take action and stay silent, you will be held accountable as election time approaches. Thank you for your time.
Which items would you like to speak to?
Comentario público. Buenos dias.
Public comment. Good morning.
Mi nombre es María Sanchez, y soy de organización ACE, del distrito nueve.
My name is Maria Sanchez. I'm from District Nine, and I'm from the ACE organization.
Les pido al Ayuntamiento adoptar las demandas de, de housekeeping de Los Ángeles para la, la forma de, de la RSO.
I am asking the council to adopt the, uh, the RSO ordinance for Keep L.A. House.
Y también le pido al concejal cu, del distrito nueve, del, del distrito uno, que esté pasando con su personal en su oficina. Le, le hemos hecho invitación a una reunión?
I am also gonna ask the representative of District Nine and his, uh, personnel to please speak with us. We have been asking for a meeting.
Para la luz del tráfico de Laberno and Wadsworth, y no ha respondido cuando, cuantas vidas más tendremos que perder para que nos haga, para que nos escuchen en esas áreas de esa comunidad.
And this would be regarding, uh, the installation of a traffic light on Vernon and Wadsworth. So how many more lives need to be lost until something is done about that?
Gracias, y queremos subir su esfuerzo porque queremos que no perdamos más vidas y más estudiantes porque están perdiendo estudiantes en esa área porque yo también vivo y cruzo en esa área y me ha pasado. Gracias.
So, yes, we're asking you to approve this because we don't wanna see any more lives lost, any more students live lost. Uh, you know, I've had to live through it myself, so thank you so much.
Which items would you like to speak to?
Bueno. Mi nombre es José Clatenschi.
My name is José Clatenschi.
Voy a hablar por un comentario público general.
And I'm gonna give a general public comment.
No queremos más aumento de renta del tres por ciento.
We don't want another rent increase, cap it at three percent.
Porque el seguro social a nosotros no nos subenta.
Because we're not getting an increase in social security.
Porque si no vamos a ir más gente en la calle.
More of us are gonna end up on the streets.
Y Gavin Newsom va a tener la culpa con la gobernadora de acá. Y todos ustedes que no nos ayudan en nada. Gracias.
And you guys are gonna be just as much at fault as Gavin Newsom, the governor, if you don't help us. Thank you so much.
Which items would you like to speak to?
A general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute, go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Tanya Ramon with the Eastside Leeds Coalition, and I live in Council District Ten. The rent stabilization ordinance is an incredibly important law that helps keep millions of Angelenos stay housed. Rent increases allowed right now are too high and unaffordable for Angelenos who are already struggling to pay rent. Personally, I will not be able to stay home if my rent keeps increasing at the current rate. Because of the immigration raids, my family has been deeply affected and has impacted my ability to meet the costs of our bills, and I'm also the main contributor of my family's rent. I have a younger brother who depends on me and my ability to make rent on time, and my story is just one of many, and I already see my neighbor's belongings piling up across my street, so it's devastating. I urge the city council to adopt Keep L.A. House demands for the RSO formula, including a rent cap with no floor and no rent banking. Thank you so much.
Which items?
Hello, money.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Spanish.
Español.
Which items?
De qué artículos quiere hablar, señora?
Eh, todo público.
General public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute, go ahead.
Tiene un minuto, adelante.
Mi nombre es Griselda Sanchez.
My name is Griselda Sanchez, and I'm from Chirla.
Del distrito uno.
From District One.
Mi situació es de hablar de mi hermano que le ha afectado los de la redadas de inmigración.
I would like to talk about my brother's situation, who has been affected by the ICE raids.
Él no ha podido trabajar, no ha podido pagar la renta ni los biles.
He hasn't been able to work, pay rent, or pay his bills.
Porque él tiene mucho miedo.
Because he's so afraid.
Y pido a ustedes que tomen liderazgo, apoyándonos a mi hermano y a las demás personas que tienen mucho miedo, y que le bajen un poco la renta, que acepten al tres por ciento de la renta, porque él está subiendo demasiado la renta. Él paga el cinco por ciento de renta, le ha aumentado demasiado. Él paga el 5% de renta. Le ha aumentado demasiado. Así que espero el apoyo de ustedes, que nos escuchen y que nos apoyen. Gracias.
So I'm asking you guys to help the families like mine who are living in fear. And I'm helping you also to cap the rent at 3%. He's already paying 5%, and it's too much. It's, it's too difficult. So I'm asking you guys to help us. Thank you so much.
Before the next speaker, I'd like to call a few more names. Andrew Grabner, Justin Curran, and Roberta Stewart.
Ah, buenos días. Mi nombre es Silvia Cos. Vengo de Chirla, de, soy del Distrito Uno. Y estoy aquí dando un comentario público. Es...
Hi, señora. Un segundo. Este, permíteme traducir. Me recuerda su nombre?
Silvia Cos.
My name is Sylvia Cos. I'm from District One and I am from Chirla. Adelante.
Sí, estoy aquí pidiendo a todos los concejales que actualicen la fórmula del aumento de renta del Larso para, para que no suban la renta más del 3% sin límite mínimo.
So I'm here asking the members of the council to please update the Larso ordinance to cap the rent at 3% with no floor. Adelante.
En este, en este año, eh, en el edificio donde vivo, me han subido dos veces la renta.
This year, in the building that I live in, they've already raised my rent twice.
Es un edificio de no control de renta.
It's a building without rent control.
Y me subieron 300 dólares de renta.
And my rent went up $300.
Soy una persona de bajo recursos, inmigrante.
I am an immigrant and I am a low-income person.
Necesito la ayuda de los concejales para que paren esto, por favor. Gracias.
And I need help from the council to put a stop to this. Thank you very much.
Good morning.
Hi. Item 22 and general public comment, please.
Okay, so you have one minute for the item and one minute for general. Go ahead.
Hi, Mr. Nuzarian. Uh, my name's Jason. I'm from the North Hollywood Northeast Neighborhood Council. With all due respect, sir, these 4118 ordinances are not the way to solve homelessness in our neighborhood. These are our neighbors, and criminalizing them isn't going to solve anything. I went by these sites. I talked with them. These are just people who are looking for homes. And I talked to several of them and they've been shuffled around three or four times already this year, moved from neighborhood to neighborhood. They just want a place to live. You know, a week and a half ago, you broke ground on 100 new tiny homes, and we celebrated that. That was really good work. And that's what we need. You know, we need more places to put people. We don't need to be criminalizing them. So I, I want to say I'm against this motion of yours. I don't think we should be doing 4118 zones in our neighborhood, to our neighbors.
General public comment.
Moving on to public, general public comment. You know, it would be really helpful, you know, you, you said in that speech when you opened the tiny homes, that this, these tiny homes are just one chapter in our book of fighting homelessness, right? That was your words. You want to end that book? You want to make that book shorter rather than having it keep getting longer and longer? You need to lower the rent. You know, until we lower the rent, until we make living in L.A. affordable again, we're not going to ever end homelessness. My wife's in a union. I know you've been fighting really hard for the union. She's an IATSE Local 839. They fought really hard for a three-year contract that only raised the, over three years, they're going to get a 6% raise. Rent in one of these, uh, RSO units can go up 5% this year. So they're getting a 6% raise in their wages and getting a 5% raise in one year versus three years. We need to stop that. We need to cap the rent at 3%. I gave your workers a whole packet about our asks at Larso. So please, I urge you to vote yes on that.
I'm going to trim my comment down to just general comment, so hopefully you have the reasonableness to at least take one more person's comment here.
Okay, you have one minute. Go ahead.
Okay, so we've got a street banner for the Just Say Hello program. So I guess that's, that's all you're going to do for... But meanwhile, while you have this civil rights campaign promoting civil rights, you've got items 17 and 18, which are, 17 and 22, which are 4118 motions, criminalizing homelessness and being hateful towards unhoused people, while you have this apparently campaign where you're going to be combating hate speech, apparently. And then you've got, meanwhile, in this city, you're all excitedly promoting and hosting this event, the Olympics, where they have just recently decided that they're going to discriminate against trans people and trans athletes and not let them participate. So we've got discrimination against trans people. Are any of you going to say anything about that? Any of you?
Thank you. All right, that concludes public comment for this morning's meeting. We're at 11:25. We took 65 minutes of public comment for this morning's meeting. Madam Clerk, what items are available for consideration at this time?
Uh, Mr. President, councilmen now vote on items 6 through 16, 18 through 21, as well as 23, sir.
All right, let's open the roll on those items, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 aye.
All right, what's next?
Next would be items 17... Items...
All right, sergeants, we're going to clear the room. Okay, so... Counselor's going to stand in recess, Mr. City Attorney, until we can clear the room. Okay, so I'm going to ask everybody who's yelling out or advise you that you are disrupting this meeting and our ability.
Bloomingville, Harris Dawson, Hernandez, Hutt, Gerardo, Lee, McCosker, Nazarian, Padilla, Park, Price, Rahman, Rodriguez, Soto, Martinez, Jaroslavsky, 14 members in a form, Mr. President.
All right, what item is before us?
Items 17 and 22 were called special for a separate vote, sir.
All right, items 17 and 22 called special for a separate vote by Councilmember Hernandez. Do you want to make comments or you just want to vote? You want to make comments? Okay, Councilmember Hernandez.
Oh, no. I just want to vote on these.
All right, so let's open the roll on these items, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes, 4 noes.
All right, what's next?
Next would be the closed session item, sir. So that would be 24 through 28, sir.
All right, let's, uh, sergeants and staff, let's prepare the room for closed session. So that includes staff of the council offices, the pertinent departments, and the other citywide elected offices. And we will begin our closed session as soon as the room has been prepared for such.
It isn't flashy. It isn't loud. Safe to say, it's not for everyone. But since 1869, it's been our way. To be unrivaled means being the best of the best of the best. We hold ourselves to a higher standard, one most people will never even witness. We set the table for what it takes to be the most highly regarded law enforcement agency in the world. Surrounded by like-minded souls, we learn together, grow together, protect together. Being unrivaled is a transformative commitment, a marriage between a calling and a lifestyle, a decoration we live by day in and day out. It's doing the work expecting nothing in return. It's training relentlessly to save one more life. It's upholding justice, no matter the cost. There are no shortcuts. It demands your all. Only those who dare will come to appreciate the perseverance and sacrifice required. But those who do will wear the badge that protects the city of dreams. LAPD, unrivaled since 1869.
Join the Nisei Week Japanese Festival for a showcase of cultural events happening in and around Little Tokyo. On Sunday, August tenth, it's the Nisei Week Grand Parade. L.A. City's Department of Cultural Affairs is the float sponsor, and spectators will see the festival queen and her court, and enjoy a host of music, dance, and parade performances with community involvement. Line up along Central Avenue for the parade starting at four P.M., or take your place along Second Street, San Pedro, or First Street. Celebrate Japanese culture in Little Tokyo at Nisei Week Grand Parade on Sunday, August tenth, at four P.M. For more information, visit nisewek.org. Granada Hills is celebrating its one-hundredth anniversary this year with a series of events. On Saturday, August ninth, join the Los Angeles Public Library at the Granada Hills branch to learn all about the L.A. Aqueduct and how water has shaped the growth of L.A. Guest speaker Jack Feldman will tell the story of the aqueduct and the challenges to bringing water to the city. Feldman retired after thirty-six years with the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power and is an avid local historian. Join L.A. Public Library at the Granada Hills branch to learn about the aqueduct on Saturday, August ninth, at ten A.M. For more, visit lapl.org/events. Join Councilmember Adrien Nazarian for a free community movie screening at Tiara Street Park. On Sunday, August tenth, the free movie is Sonic Three. This 2024 action-adventure comedy film is based on the Sonic video game series. Head to Tiara Street Park for free screening of Sonic Three on Sunday, August tenth, at seven-thirty. For more information, visit the Instagram of Councilmember Nazarian at CD2LosAngeles. And that's a look at some things to do.
Every day, over one hundred Americans die from secondhand smoke. Secondhand smoke in children can cause asthma, ear infections, and increased risk of sudden infant death syndrome. Go to smokefreehomesla.com. Learn how you can protect your home from secondhand smoke.
Every day, over 100 Americans die from secondhand smoke. Secondhand smoke in children can cause asthma, ear infections, and increased risk of sudden infant death syndrome. Go to smokefreehomesla.com. Learn how you can protect your home from secondhand smoke.
It isn't flashy. It isn't loud. Safe to say, it's not for everyone. But since 1869, it's been our way. To be unrivaled means being the best of the best of the best. We hold ourselves to a higher standard, one most people will never even witness. We set the table for what it takes to be the most highly regarded law enforcement agency in the world. Surrounded by like-minded souls, we learn together, grow together, protect together. Being unrivaled is a transformative commitment, a marriage between a calling and a lifestyle, a decoration we live by day in and day out. It's doing the work expecting nothing in return. It's training relentlessly to save one more life. It's upholding justice, no matter the cost. There are no shortcuts. It demands your all. Only those who dare will come to appreciate the perseverance and sacrifice required. But those who do will wear the badge that protects the city of dreams. LAPD. Unrivaled. Since 1869.
Join the Nise Week Japanese Festival for a showcase of cultural events happening in and around Little Tokyo. On Sunday, August 10th, it's the Nise Week Grand Parade. L.A. City's Department of Cultural Affairs is the float sponsor, and spectators will see the festival queen and her court, and enjoy a host of music, dance, and parade performances with community involvement. Line up along Central Avenue for the parade starting at 4:00 p.m., or take your place along Second Street, San Pedro, or First Street. Celebrate Japanese culture in Little Tokyo at Nise Week Grand Parade on Sunday, August 10th at 4:00 p.m. For more information, visit niseweek.org. Granada Hills is celebrating its 100th anniversary this year with a series of events. On Saturday, August 9th, join the Los Angeles Public Library at the Granada Hills branch to learn all about the L.A. Aqueduct and how water has shaped the growth of L.A. Guest speaker Jack Feldman will tell the story of the aqueduct and the challenges to bringing water to the city. Feldman retired after 36 years with the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power and is an avid local historian. Join L.A. Public Library at the Granada Hills branch to "Learn About the Aqueduct" on Saturday, August 9th at 10:00 a.m. For more, visit lapl.org/events. Join the Nise Week Japanese Festival for a showcase of cultural events happening in and around Little Tokyo. On Sunday, August 10th, it's the Nise Week Grand Parade. L.A. City's Department of Cultural Affairs is the float sponsor, and spectators will see the festival queen and her court, and enjoy a host of music, dance, and parade performances with community involvement. Line up along Central Avenue for the parade starting at 4:00 p.m., or take your place along Second Street, San Pedro, or First Street. Celebrate Japanese culture in Little Tokyo at Nise Week Grand Parade on Sunday, August 10th at 4:00 p.m. For more information, visit niseweek.org. Granada Hills is celebrating its 100th anniversary this year with a series of events. On Saturday, August 9th, join the Los Angeles Public Library at the Granada Hills branch to learn all about the L.A. Aqueduct and how water has shaped the growth of L.A. Guest speaker Jack Feldman will tell the story of the aqueduct and the challenges to bringing water to the city. Feldman retired after 36 years with the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power and is an avid local historian. Join L.A. Public Library at the Granada Hills branch to "Learn About the Aqueduct" on Saturday, August 9th at 10:00 a.m. For more, visit lapl.org/events. Join Councilmember Adrien Nazarian for a free community movie screening at Tiara Street Park. On Sunday, August 10th, the free movie is Sonic 3. This 2024 action-adventure comedy film is based on the Sonic video game series. Head to Tiara Street Park for free screening of Sonic 3 on Sunday, August 10th at 7:30. For more information, visit the Instagram of Councilmember Nazarian at CD2LosAngeles. And that's a look at some things to do. Line up along Central Avenue for the parade starting at 4:00 P.M., or take your place along Second Street, San Pedro, or First Street. Celebrate Japanese culture in Little Tokyo at Nisei Week Grand Parade on Sunday, August 10th at 4:00 P.M. For more information, visit nisewek.org. Join Councilmember Adrien Nazarian for a free community movie screening at Tiara Street Park. On Sunday, August 10th, the free movie is Sonic 3. This 2024 action-adventure comedy film is based on the Sonic video game series. Head to Tiara Street Park for a free screening of Sonic 3 on Sunday, August 10th at 7:30. For more information, visit the Instagram of Councilmember Nazarian at CD2LosAngeles. And that's a look at some things to do.
A regularly scheduled meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.
Here's what's happening in L.A. this week.
This is L.A. Current.
This is about all of us. It's about choosing to believe in our city again and proving it with action. And no matter what our city faces, L.A. never, ever gives up.
The number-one cause of preventable death after injury is bleeding. Someone who is severely bleeding can bleed to death in as little as five minutes. Minutes count, and your LAPD thanks you for learning how to stop the bleed by following the ABCs. If someone has an injury with blood spurting out of the wound, clothing soaked in blood, bleeding that won't stop, or loss of any part of an arm or leg, you need to act quickly. The first step is A for alert. Have someone call 911. The next step is B for bleeding. Locate the bleeding injury and remove any clothing covering the area so you can see the injury. The final step is C, compress. If the injury is to the leg or arm, prepare to use the tourniquet. Unwrap the tourniquet and apply it two to three inches above the wound. Do not place the tourniquet onto a joint. Go above the joint if necessary. Pull the free end of the tourniquet and wrap it until it is tight. Wind the windlass until the bleeding stops. Secure the windlass in place. Note the time the tourniquet was applied and write it down, if you can, or tell first responders when they arrive.
It isn't flashy. It isn't loud. Safe to say, it's not for everyone. But since 1869, it's been our way. To be unrivaled means being the best of the best of the best. We hold ourselves to a higher standard, one most people will never even witness. We set the table for what it takes to be the most highly-regarded law enforcement agency in the world. Surrounded by like-minded souls, we learn together, grow together, protect together. Being unrivaled is a transformative commitment. A marriage between a calling and a lifestyle. A decoration we live by day in and day out. It's doing the work expecting nothing in return. It's training relentlessly to save one more life. It's upholding justice, no matter the cost. There are no shortcuts. It demands your all. Only those who dare will come to appreciate the perseverance and sacrifice required. But those who do will wear the badge that protects the city of dreams. LAPD. Unrivaled since 1869. LAPD: Unrivaled, since 1869.
Join the Nise Week Japanese Festival for a showcase of cultural events happening in and around Little Tokyo. On Sunday, August 10th, it's the Nise Week Grand Parade. L.A. City's Department of Cultural Affairs is the float sponsor, and spectators will see the festival queen and her court, and enjoy a host of music, dance, and parade performances with community involvement. Line up along Central Avenue for the parade starting at 4:00 p.m., or take your place along Second Street, San Pedro, or First Street. Celebrate Japanese culture in Little Tokyo at Nise Week Grand Parade on Sunday, August 10th at 4:00 p.m. For more information, visit niseweek.org. Granada Hills is celebrating its 100th anniversary this year with a series of events. On Saturday, August 9th, join the Los Angeles Public Library at the Granada Hills Branch to learn all about the L.A. Aqueduct and how water has shaped the growth of L.A. Guest speaker Jack Feldman will tell the story of the aqueduct and the challenges to bringing water to the city. Feldman retired after 36 years with the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power and is an avid local historian. Join L.A. Public Library at the Granada Hills Branch to learn about the aqueduct on Saturday, August 9th at 10:00 a.m. For more, visit lapl.org/events. Join Councilmember Adrien Nazarian for a free community movie screening at Tiara Street Park. On Sunday, August 10th, the free movie is Sonic 3. This 2024 action-adventure comedy film is based on the Sonic video game series. Head to Tiara Street Park for free screening of Sonic 3 on Sunday, August 10th at 7:30. For more information, visit the Instagram of Councilmember Nazarian at CD2LosAngeles. And that's a look at some things to do.
Every day, over 100 Americans die from secondhand smoke. Secondhand smoke in children can cause asthma, ear infections, and increased risk of sudden infant death syndrome. Go to smokefreehomesla.com.
A recently scheduled meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.
Here's what's happening in L.A. this week.
This is L.A. current.
This is about all of us. It's about choosing to believe in our city again and proving it with action. And no matter what our city faces, L.A. never, ever gives up.
The number-one cause of preventable death after injury is bleeding. Someone who is severely bleeding can bleed to death in as little as five minutes. Minutes count, and your LAFD thanks you for learning how to stop the bleed by following the ABCs. If someone has an injury with blood spreading out of the wound, clothing soaked in blood, bleeding that won't stop, or loss of any part of an arm or leg, you need to act quickly. The first step is A for alert. Have someone call 911. The next step is B for bleeding. Locate the bleeding injury and remove any clothing covering the area so you can see the injury. The final step is C, compress. If the injury is to the leg or arm, prepare to use the tourniquet. Unwrap the tourniquet and apply it two to three inches above the wound. Do not place the tourniquet onto a joint; go above the joint if necessary. Pull the free end of the tourniquet and wrap it until it is tight. Wind the windlass until the bleeding stops. Secure the windlass in place. Note the time the tourniquet was applied and write it down, if you can, or tell first responders when they arrive.
Madam Clerk, if you can call the roll.
Bloomingville, Harris, Dawson, Hernandez, Hutt, Girado, Lee, McCosker, Nazarian, Padilla, Part, Price, Ramon Rodriguez, Soto Martinez, Jaroslavski. Ten members present in court, Mr. President.
All right. Mr. City Attorney, anything to report on a closed session?
So, no, Mr. President, there is nothing to report on the closed session. I believe the extent, they have not been. Items 27 and 28 are being continued?
Yes. So, items 27 and 28, closed session items, are continued to one week, and that's August 13, 2025.
That's fine. That's fine, we'll continue item 24. We'll continue item 24 till next week Friday?
And for the record, Mr. President, item 24 is also continued one week to August 13, 2025. So again, 24, 27, 28, continued to August 13, 2025, sir.
All right, what's next?
Motions for posting a referral.
They are posted and referred?
Desk is clear, sir.
Announcements, members? Seeing no announcement, I'll ask everyone to rise for adjourning motions. Any adjourning motions to my left? Any adjourning motions to my right? All right, we have one announcement. You could use Mr. Nazarian's desk if you like.
Hi, everybody. Thank you, Council President. This morning, federal immigration enforcement conducted a raid at the Westlake Home Depot. The video footage shows agents hiding in the back of an unarmed rental Penske truck, and then ambushing and arresting day laborers. We're trying to get confirmation on the numbers, but it appears it was about 10 to 15 people. These are my constituents, human beings, targeted and terrorized with no warrant, no due process, and in clear violation of a federal court order. There is currently a temporary restraining order in place that prohibits indiscriminate immigration enforcement, and still, this administration looks eager to violate that order, due process, and basic human dignity. I'm calling on all Angelenos to assist in ensuring that we can hold the federal government accountable for this transgression. If you witnessed federal immigration actions and you are safe and able to do so, record the action, and then afterwards, write down or record yourself detailing everything you witnessed. The sooner you can do this, the better. Please share the video evidence and your contact information with your local city representatives. We are especially interested in videos that are original and not those that have been shared on social media, which will assist the city in our investigation. Let me be clear, your safety comes first. But if you can document what's happening, know that you are helping protect our neighbors and strengthen our case against unlawful federal overreach. We will hold this administration accountable, but we need to do it together. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that reminder, and I think all of us saw that video, and so we would need to remain vigilant, because we're not dealing with an administration that's necessarily going to follow the courts. So, thank you for that reminder and that report, Councilmember Hernandez. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you so much, everybody.